So. Just want to say, welcome to everybody. A few housekeeping notes. You are being recorded. So just to give you a heads up on that. You, if you have any questions, you can. Enter them in the chat at the bottom. Caitlin. One of our Y C staff will be monitoring that and bringing them up at appropriate times throughout the presentation. And if you find that your question is not addressed, it'll probably be addressed in the F A Qs when we post after the town hall session. So. Yes, and please, if you're not mute, please make sure you're on mute as well. So. Awesome. Okay, so, welcome everybody. This is an update on our competitions program for the 21-22 season. So we're just going to walk everybody through the possible changes that are going to happen, or the changes that are happening. Here's a few agenda items for you. So it does seem like a lot, but it'll. We'll make sure it's efficient. So we will be talking about our current landscape within the province in COVID. We're going to talk about a pivot that's going to be happening for the start of our youth competition season and give you a little snapshot of what November and December will look like for all our age divisions. Give you some rationales to why our changes were made. And then we're going to go into a little bit of a deeper dive for each of our groupings. For youth competitions. So we will talk about what early contact will look like for November and December, what 15 and 16 U will look like, and as well as 17 and 18 U. And then we'll just give you some timelines of upcoming events that are going to happen and what to look forward to for the next couple of months. So that's what we will be talking about today. So yeah, so without further ado, just to let you guys know what we are seeing as a P S O and what a number of our clubs are seeing as well. School boards are obviously taking a very cautious approach to reissuing communities permits. Hopefully, some of them will be starting in October, mid-October. And if they are opening, it's not like one school, like every school board is following the same. Regulations with their reopening. We're finding out that some are only allowing training, no scrimmages or tournaments. They're limiting their time, whether it's. Blocks of hours, or it's evenings, or weekdays, and all that kind of stuff. So it's really kind of like a jumble out there of what each school board is doing. We are currently in step three of our reopening plan. So that means every capacity should be at 50%. Capacity, or obviously whatever, 10,000 people, but whatever smaller. That doesn't apply to us, obviously, but. And also kind of to give you guys an idea of what we're facing with our hosting bids. So September 20th was our first deadline for bids to host events. Between November and January. Traditionally, our last full competition season was 2009. We would have received 700 bids by now. And currently, for 2001, for November to January, we only have 150. So that kind of gives you an idea of what facilities are available and. How open we are across, across the province. So and a lot of those facilities have been booked by our staff as well. So. Mark and Caitlin have been scouring the province to find any available. Two, three court facility in the province. So and we do know that school boards will be reevaluating their status for permits come 2022. So that's kind of what we're facing right now for indoor competitions. And you kind of put all that together and we're like, hey, guess what? It's time to pivot. So and obviously, rather than giving up on the beginning of the season, we want to deliver our mandate as a P S O. We want to make sure that we're offering. Programming to help kids both physically and mentally and, you know, kind of get them back on the court and get them back to normal. We also are tied very tightly to government regulations, school boards, and public health regulations. So those three, you know, bodies. Really are telling us what we can and can't do. And again, there's a lack of consistency between school boards and public health regulations across the province. So. That, that's also an issue. And obviously, we want to make sure that we're keeping our sport alive, giving people a chance to play and. And really making sure that, you know, that sense of normalcy is coming back for the kids. And even for us adults, I'm not going to lie. I miss having volleyball. So we need to come up with a fluid system where matches can take place, but in a non-traditional format. For everybody from early contacts to our 16 U age divisions. So. Yeah, so and I also want to know that what we present here still may change depending on what happens with the pandemic because we all know. Shutdowns and all that other messy stuff can't happen quite quickly. So. That's that. And here's our snapshot of what we would like to offer you, membership. So it's league play. So early contact, league play from November 18th to December 12th. And we'd be placing, taking place at the teams booked facilities. I don't know if anybody can remember. Oh, gosh, a year ago, when this pandemic first started and we tried to run a competition season in 2020, we did present leagues. To the membership and in hopes that we'd be able to run some type of indoor competition. And if this is very, going to follow very closely to what we presented in 2020. So. We're going to ask that obviously, clubs and teams, they have their facilities and we're hoping to book league matches. Using that time and for O V A competition league matches. So for early contacts from November 18th to December 12th. This is going to replace two tournaments for them. So that means that we originally planned for five regular season events for E C I. From November to January, and now we're planning on three plus your league play. So that's what it's going to look like for E C I. 15 U to 16 U, same timeframe for your league. So we're looking November 18th to December 12th. Same practice facilities, club booked facilities. And this is only going to replace their first event for the season. And it is important to note for these age divisions. November and December for our proposed calendar that was published earlier in the summer, they did have two tournaments for them. We're not going to, you know, we're going to make sure that we reschedule another event for them in the new year. So the 16 U girls, 16 U boys, and 15 U boys who would, who have lot, who will be losing two events from November, December, will be rescheduled for March 27th. Just to ensure we have those three regular season events that will take place in January to March. Before Ontario Championships. And 17 and 18 U. So I did mention earlier that we do have 150 facilities booked. And we would like to use those facilities to run our 17 and 18 U competition as is. So they will remain as tournament structures using the facilities that we have for secured. 18 U's are actually going to have two events between that time period, same time period. I think we are starting November 13th. And going to December 12th for our 17 and 18 U's. So they'll have two tournaments within that timeframe. 17 U will have one. And the reason, a couple of reasons why we did chose to choose to keep the 17 and 18 U's as a tournament structure. Is the fact that they're smaller numbers and they can fit within our facilities that we have booked. And this is their final season for a lot of these, these athletes. So we kind of want to give them. A nice send off considering that we haven't been able to do that for the, for the, for the last couple of years. So we, this is their last kick of the can and we want to make sure that they're, they're going to have a good season. So that's a little snapshot. And yeah, now I'm going to send it. Oh, Mark, is it your turn?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to send it over to my, oh, and I didn't introduce everybody. I'm sorry on the call. I apologize. So we have a bunch of. Youth competition staffers on the call. We have Alicia Lydams, who is our. Director of Operations. Volleyball operations, Mark Weersma, who is our competition lead, Caitlin Mallion, who is our youth competition coordinator, and myself, who is the indoor competitions manager. So. That's us. So take it away, Mark.
Thanks, Carrie. So as Carrie mentioned earlier, the probably the biggest problem that we're facing is the lack of venues. So why league play? I guess the simplest way to put it, it's the most efficient way to utilize venues across the province. So as you probably all found out, and as we found out trying to book venues, trying to find a two or three court facility on an entire Saturday or an entire Sunday is very challenging. So the thing that we like the most about league play is it gives teams an opportunity to invite another team in their league during a practice time slot. Let's say you have a 90-minute practice time slot. Hey, let's invite over one of the teams. Let's get in one of our two out of three matches. And then that way you can utilize smaller chunks and also facilities with one court instead of always looking for that two or three court facility. So that, that obviously is the main. One of the big reasons why we're, are going with the league play. League play also allows each stream to enter regular season tournaments in January with the better understanding of rank. So. We'll be essentially using this league play as a regular tournament, except it's scheduled over three and a half weeks instead of one day. So. We'll, we'll break down each age group, but especially at the 15 and 16 U's where we'll be utilizing the results from. Every one of those pods, and then we'll do promotion relegation after that. So it is a good way to start us going at 100 miles an hour for that first January tournament. We also have a few, we'll go over the, the calendar, but as of right now, November 27th and December 4th. We do not have a specific 17 U or 18 U date for that for single tournaments. We do have a few extra venues. And those are going to be kind of a, we're not exactly sure how they'll be utilized yet, but we are hoping to use those for pods. That either don't have venue space to use, or there might be kind of an awkward travel situation where you have some satellite teams. And it doesn't necessarily work so well for them to travel four hours, obviously, for one match. So it'll be a kind of a combination of Caitlin and myself reaching out to some pods that are really. As we can see when we're posting them are not in the best situation to have this league, league play. And then we can essentially do that entire league play in one day, just like a normal tournament format. So early contact league play, as Carrie mentioned, it's looking, the dates are November 18th to December 12th. So the one league play. Replaces their two previous tournaments, and then they'll still have three regular season tournaments from January to April. And I should mention right now, too, obviously, we are 100% for sure confident in January to April, but at this point, we are planning. That we'll still have those one-day tournaments. So right now, this is everything focused on November to December, leading into our regular. Type of a competition format that we all know and love so well for January start time. So teams will be placed into pods of five or six for a single round robin. The four-on-four rally ball level will be three straight to 21. And the six-on-six and T N S will be two out of three matches. There are no points, playoffs, medals, or promotion relegation at the E C I league play. And this does follow exactly with what we were going to do, even if it was a one-day tournament. So four-on-four, all the one-day tournaments were always going to be. Developmental events. And six-on-six, it was going to be an alternating approach. And the first two were originally going to be developmental. So this essentially just replaces those two developmental events and T N S as well. The first event of the year was going to be developmental, which is why this is developmental as well. And we. There is a note here, match results will be referenced for creation of January events. Now, I don't want that to sound like, oh, every match matters, like. Counting points, these will be posted, all that. It's more for Caitlin and I on the backend to help just schedule that first January event. So we don't have, let's say, the top five teams in the entire province. Happen to be all at that very same event. So it'll just help us on the backend kind of create even splits or as even as possible per se. With there being no tiered splits for this first event. It's pretty much solely based on geography. We don't have to worry about having a premier division, a championship division, trillium division, geography will be the main focus there. And I mentioned the six-on-six rally ball, the first event will be. Sorry, the first league play will be developmental, and then the first event in January, that will be their first crack at medals, promotion relegation, and points. And across the board, soft uniform rule for league play matches, and even for 17, 18 U, November and December will be soft uniform rule. Looking at the 15 U and 16 U league play. So similar, it's the exact same timeline as E C I. In that November 18th to December 12th is the three and a half week time span. I should know, even though it's three and a half weeks, it does span for weekends. So that should give teams a little bit more opportunity to have some flexibility with their scheduling and during the day scheduling as well. So the, the poser create a little bit differently with 15 or 16 U because these matches do count and there will be playoffs and. Classification, a one through eight standing at the end of the league play. So they'll be created in pods of eight and then further broken down into two pools of four, which Caitlin and I will clarify when we do send out this initial email. And so each, that pot of eight will complete their round robin, each pool of four. And then after that, they'll have a crossover. So your classic A versus A1 versus B2, B1 versus A2. Which is your semifinal tier one, and then followed by a gold and bronze medal match. And same thing, the bottom two teams in each pool. They will have their fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth matches as well. So that way, every team will get three, two out of three round robin matches and two, two out of three playoff matches. And I should note, just so it doesn't seem too intimidating for the team managers, I should have mentioned that at the very beginning, when we do send out this email to. The team managers welcoming them to the pod. So realistically, it'd be about eight people we would be emailing. It is their responsibility to schedule these matches, similar to what we presented with league play back a year ago. But with a pot of eight. It does sound intimidating. There's a lot of teams to deal with, but with that being broken into two pools of four, really your main focus for that first half. Or the first about two weeks is just emailing those three other teams in your group of four to schedule your round robin matches, which is a total of only. Three matches per team and six combined in that pool. So that should help kind of make it not seem as scary. Here, standard point. Oh, yeah, I mentioned that, too, how 15 U and 16 U, it's essentially treated the exact same way as a provincial cut would be treated. In that there'll be medals given out, promotion relegation points, everything will be the same. It's just over three and a half weeks instead of a one-day tournament. And as Carrie mentioned, we will be adding a tournament on Sunday, March 27th, as a Bogarski Cup for the age groups that had two tournaments. Prior to Christmas, just to make sure that they can have one league play, followed by three regular season tournaments in the new year. And one thing I also mentioned about 15 U and 16 U, in the past, especially at 16 U, we would traditionally start with every. Tier broken out already for that very first provincial cup. So we would have trillium, championship select, and premier, which obviously means your. Preseason ranking or your end-of-season ranking from the year prior does play a pretty big role in where you're going to start the season, especially with everyone trying to climb the ladder. And points being so important. But this year, since we all know these end-of-season rankings from 1920 are, are really not the most accurate because so much has changed since then. We are. Creating smaller tiers to start off, as in 16 U girls, actually 15 U all the way up to 18 U girls, there'll only be two tiers to start. So that kind of de-emphasizes the amount of. I guess emphasis on your preseason ranking going in. So everyone have a better shot at kind of finding their spot for the next tournament or even for the third tournament. So this is kind of summing up the league play process. So once you guys sign up, we'll go over the timelines, I think, in one or two slides. Down this presentation. But after you register, Caitlin and myself will be creating your pods. We will send out an email. To each group pod. So we'll just base it on the contact email from your team when you register in M R S, welcoming you to the group. Just some housekeeping items, different protocols. We'll have the latest protocols because I'm sure what we have right now will change slightly between now and then. But we'll introduce the group and then that way you have that first line of communication to the other teams to start scheduling your matches. Each pod has three and a half weeks to play all their matches. And each pod makes their own schedules and can play games at, really, I want to stress this part, whatever works best for that pod. So there might be. A team within that pod who happens to have this great facility available for like half the day. Well, that'd be a perfect chance for, hey, let's get in a good chunk of our matches. Let's do like half this league play in one day. And if that works for them, great. But there might be other pods where no one has that big block of time at a facility. And the best option is just to do the inviting the team over for practice. And there might also be some instances where. Let's say two teams, Team A and Team B, neither of them have any available practice space, or maybe they have a venue restriction where. You're not allowed to invite another team. Well, that's where we're really hoping that the eight teams within the pod will have a bit of flexibility, a little bit of give and take. I know it's not going to be the easiest at times to figure out the scheduling, but given the circumstance, we're really just hoping people can work together and try to figure out what works best for that pod. So. All, all the matches can take place. And now in terms of officials, so teams will work with the O V A local assigners and Caitlin and myself will include this contact information in your welcome email. In terms of scheduling your match. So we just put this minimum of seven days notice as a, as a kind of a reference point. In terms of if a referee will actually be available, there might be a chance if, let's say, you're five days out, but it's not guaranteed per se. And then after each match, we ask that you email us, Caitlin or myself, the winning team and the winning scorer. We'll keep a. Kind of similar to what you guys are, what everyone is used to, where we have our every. Tournament. So let's say a championship A, 16 U girls will be posted on our website. And then after the tournament, we post the results. That'd be the same idea. Well, we'll just have. Like a round robin board, and we'll just keep updating the results as we get them sent in. So everyone can have an updated live look as to how that league is going over the course of the three and a half weeks. And then after all the leagues are complete, we'll take those final rankings and then use that for, well, this isn't so much for the E C I, but mainly the 15 and 16 U. Will be completing the promotion relegation and using those to help seed our January events. And then January 22, we will be rocking with all our single-day normal events as planned, just like that. So 17 U and 18 U. So now, as Carrie mentioned earlier, we're, we're able to keep this with our normal typical one-day tournaments. There's only one slight modification to this. So this, very fortunate how this worked out in that. On each of the weekends that 17 U or 18 U are playing, both the girls and the boys are playing. So it allowed us to go with kind of this approach. So I'll take the first weekend as an example. So 18 U boys and girls, they will register for November 13th to 14th weekend. But due to the lack of venues and we kind of have to massage it a little bit to make it work, you will play on either the Saturday or Sunday. So you might have some 18 U girls. Like, let's say championship A, that might be on the Saturday, and maybe championship B is on, on the Sunday. So just keep that in mind with your teams, that when you register in M R S, plan to, you can be either playing on the Saturday or Sunday. And we'll have those posted similar timeline. As years before, usually about three, three-ish weeks out because this first deadline to register in M R S is only four weeks out from the event. And, and really, there's no adjustment in terms of points regularly, sort of promotion relegation, all that is the same as everyone's used to. Essentially, this is really no different other than the fact that I just mentioned about the, you'll play on either the Saturday or Sunday. And same with the hosting, it'll be the same hosting structure as before. Clubs will be responsible for hosting the day of the competition. And most of these. Venues that we have booked are at different private facilities that. That are either myself or the O V A book. So we would be looking for a host. So realistically, I would just be sending out an email to the, let's say, eight or nine teams in the event and seeing if someone wants to host and, and going at it that way. So some just general additional notes in case we didn't capture them when we're talking about the specific. Age groups. So as I mentioned, league welcome email, as soon as we have the pods posted, emails will be sent to confirmed playoff teams. So this will be kind of as leagues are happening in case. Some pods need help with the tiebreaker procedures. I am absolutely in love with tiebreaker procedures. So we are super excited to help with that. And we'll just be keeping an eye. Let's say there's one pod where we haven't received any results yet. We'll just touch base, just ongoing communication back and forth to. See where the pods at. But yeah, if anyone needs any help with the tiebreaker procedures and to decide which, which placement you are, A1, A2 kind of thing, we will be definitely there to help with that. League play fees are the exact same as your tournament fees. I believe we posted those a couple of months back. On the website or at least at town hall. So in terms of your budgeting, everything can stay the same. It'll be the exact same fee. And then what does that fee get you? So this was a little bit different in that. For two out of three matches. So really, actually, sorry, as you mentioned, there are no three out of five. So across the board for E C I, all the way up to 16 U. That fee will include 90 minutes of gym time. So whoever is. Hosting that time slot after the event or after the match, they'll send an email. We're, we're finalizing the form and exactly what that looks like, but just simply filling out the form along with the receipt of the venue. And then the O V A will credit or send a check back to that club for that specific amount. We will be sending a hosting kit to each team. Realistically, we'll probably send a large box to the club and then have pre-made individual envelopes within that box for all the teams within that club, just to save on. Shipping. And it'll also include hand sanitizer, signage, all sorts of signage with COVID. And yeah, we're, we're working through all the signs. There'll be a bunch of stuff in there. And we'll also have instructions on what. Each thing is for and where to put it in the venue. And we'll send out one hosting kit, kind of bulk shipment at the very beginning for the duration of league play, since it is just one. One league play. Playing up, this is always a, a topic that comes to question. So just want to clarify this here. So since. League play is not as dependent on specific venues for all day long, two or three court, there is a lot more flexibility there. So we are still open to. Playing up for league play. And it is important to keep in mind. It, it will be potentially challenging with the scheduling. So just remember when you are signing up, it's not like we won't allow it, but just. Remember that it will be two different pods that you are trying to schedule. And there's no set schedule. So it will be a bit of massaging needed there to make it work. Now with 17 and 18 U, that's where it becomes a little bit trickier because we are. Basically right on the borderline in terms of what the number of venues we have and the number of venues we think we'll need. So as of right now, the plan is to sign up for a waitlist, an underage waitlist. So we just created those in M R S now. So as a 16 U team. There's, you can sign up for the waitlist for 17 U. It's free to do that, but that will give us just that final list and then dependent on. If we have some slots and those slots will be chosen just at complete random to fill in those, those few holes in different venues if that comes to be. So I will say, just giving everyone the heads up, the first 18-year tournament is looking pretty tight, but the second 18-year tournament is looking a little bit better. And it's tough to say, too, if, if more venues open up. Then they'll give more of an opportunity for underage teams to play in those older age groups. League play matches will follow R T P protocols, daily health screening, contact tracing, safety plans. And that will be need to share, need to be shared with teams playing at your venues. So this will be on the responsibility of the host that is. I guess, yeah, hosting that match. So if you invite one other team over to your practice time slot for a two out of three match, it would be your responsibility as that host team. To send the head coach or team contact of that other team that you're inviting with the specific venue protocols. As, as we all know. These range quite a bit from venue, venue and different entrance points and different. Health screening. So that would be the responsibility of the home team. And for leagues, the teams that are contacting the side to book a referee. So in that case, too, it would be the home team who's ever hosting. That specific game or multiple games, it would be their responsibility to book the referee. And I should note, too, if, if a referee is not available, you can still have your match. Let's say you know a ref or someone wants to step in, that's. A-okay, and we will still take those results and count them as a final score. So four-on-four rally ball, optional referee participation, six-on-six to 16 U, single ref. And 17 U to 18 U is booked as normal by the O V A through the assigners. So in terms of teams booking their own referee, that's only done in the league play format. And 17 U to 18 U. in terms of teams booking their own referee, that's only done in the league play format. The seventeen U to eighteen U is done the way we've done it in the past where assigners look after that. And in same as years past where we post the team splits under these competitions, uh upcoming tournaments and events, that's where we will post. So you'll have, let's say fourteen or fifteen year girls league play. And then in that, we'll have each pod broken out. And then it within each pod will have all the specific um venue information, if there happens to be some generic stuff, but also with the results. Basically, any information that's needed will be there. And then that's also towards the seventeen U and eighteen U information as every venue will realistically have different, slightly different rules or modifications. So we'll clarify all that on that page on the OVA website. And a league manual and the official youth competitions manual will be released at the end of October. So we'll have uh the youth company, sorry, the youth competitions manual that we all know, the, the big massive bible basically to our, our competitions. And then league play will just be a, a smaller. I don't know how many pages quite yet, getting larger as we speak, but it'll be a lot smaller expert to that. So in terms of timeline, this is the timeline that we're looking at. And these dates are coming up very quickly. So the, I should note, the original registration deadline for the original first tournaments of October tenth, that is no longer because we will not be having tournaments on the first November sixth and seventh weekend. But Sunday, October seventeenth, that date is currently posted right now and that has not changed. So that's your eighteen U boys and girls registration deadline for the November thirteenth and fourteenth provincial cup. Sunday, October twenty-fourth is a very big day as this will be the registration deadline for the first seventeen U boys and girls provincial cup on November twentieth and twenty-first. But also that is the day where all four and four to sixteen U teams will register in MRS for their league play as well. So Sunday, October twenty-fourth, that is the big one. Do not forget that. Mark that down in your calendars. Uh, Sunday, October thirty-first, this is for the second eighteen U boys and girls event on December eleventh and twelfth. And then the week of November eighth. So this is our, our plan for Caitlin and I to have everything posted by and we'll be posting stuff as we're ready. So since all age groups registration deadline for the most part is the same day, we'll basically be posting age groups as we complete the pods. So yours might be ready a week and a half before that, or it might be in that November eighth week. Uh, Thursday, and then yep, Thursday, November eighteenth, that's to start league play. And then that goes until Sunday, December twelfth. And then that will give our team enough time to take all those results in and then start scheduling our January one day events. And that is it for the pivot, as Alicia loves to say. Uh, so upcoming town hall sessions and meetings. Regional AGMs are coming up. Please click here for your region's Zoom link and any other important information. November seventh, special meeting of members to vote on proposed bylaw revisions. November eight, COVID and safety protocols for league play matches and tournaments. And Sunday, December twelfth, OVA AGM, and there will be more information coming on that. So sure, we have a bunch of questions coming in?
Yes. So we have had a ton of questions come in. Um, I was just holding off on questions answering in the chat so we could talk about them now, or they were answered throughout the presentation. So thank you very much. If I missed your question, um, and don't ask Mark and Carrie and Alicia and myself the question, just put it in the chat again and I will make sure to um answer it there. Okay, so let's start here. Um, we talked about age groups, you're allowed to play up and also the waitlist. Um, we talked about if a club has access to a three or four court facility and for a full day, they're more than likely to run their league. Um, sorry, more than welcome to run their pod for the entire day, get it all done in one day. So that's perfect. Um, are the dates for seventeen U, eighteen U all the same as published?
Yes, they are. Uh, the, and the only difference is you are signed up for the same weekend. So for example, I forget, I don't have the calendar right in front of me, but if eighteen U girls was on Saturday right now, just remember that you could potentially play on the Sunday.
Um, let's see here. Does um for league play, does there need to be a specific time or a number of days between each match?
No.
No, it can be all at the same time. It can be then one day after another, et cetera.
And just uh, you just kind of reminded me for, because there will certainly be a bunch of pods that do their entirely play in one day. We'll post a template schedule, just so teams have a kind of a starting point, so they don't have to create the whole schedule uh on their own. And that will just be on our website as well as a template.
Hmm. What happens if teams are already registered for their first tournament? So some people have noticed that in MRS, we have updated all of the tournaments, um especially for uh provincial cups before they turn to provincial waves.
Yep. So we can either refund them a hundred percent or, because there's not very many. So realistically, we will probably just reach out to those specific teams and just touch base. Do you want us just to transfer you over? That way we just avoid the MRS extra fee for every in and out kind of thing.
We talked about um the venue rental costs for league play and that will be expensed to the OVA um so that we can pay for the practice time or up to ninety minutes. Uh, to do.
And just a, a point about that ninety minutes too. You got your, let's say you invite a team over. You are more than welcome to play as long as you want, basically. If you have two and a half hours, you want to play seven sets with them, it by all means, do it. It's all up to you, but OVA will only cover ninety minutes and the official will only be there for the two out of three.
Um, and it should be noted that if you are um scheduling more than one match for your pod at your facility, um, it would be ninety mi- ninety minutes per match. So if you're having a full afternoon of games, we would ninety minutes per game.
Um, regarding officials, will four on four be using officials?
We would like, go ahead, Mark.
I was gonna say, yep, you can. It's, it's optional at the end of the day. Um, but in your fee, it does include officials. So it, they're there if you want to use them. It's up to you.
Sorry, I'm trying to copy paste more. Um.
Just one more thing about the officials. Sorry to interrupt. Um, if you're unable to get uh an official for your match and you still wish to continue with that match, we will um honor those results. So it's, it's not like you have to have an official to um, to run it. Obviously, we would love for you to, you know, extend that to the officials simply because they haven't officiated in, in a year and a half either. So um, I don't know if that's a selling point, but you know, they want to get back on the court just as much as we do. So.
Is there a minimum number of matches?
Yes. So in the fifteen U to sixteen U, those will be a minimum of five matches and there may be some odd um pool, just like a normal tournament where we have mostly all nines or twelves. And then you had those odd tens or eights to make, just to make the numbers work. So it'll be the same thing here where we'll try our best to make them as many eights as possible, but we, we probably will have a few different odd formats, just to make the numbers work. And we'll still aim for that five matches in the league play as your minimum.
Perfect. Um, and we talked about the youth competition manual as well as a new league manual will be out this month. Um, hopefully sooner than later, but for sure by the end of October. And then the deadline, just reminder, Mark, deadline for the first eighteen U event was.
Uh, oh, Sunday, October seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, so in ten days.
Yeah.
Ten days.
Coming up quick.
Yes, it's a quick turnaround for everybody. Um, uh spectators, are spectators permitted at the eighteen and seventeen U tournaments that we are hosting?
So this will be a venue by venue situation. I'm, I'm just discussing with all the venues that we have booked right now. And it is, it's all over the place. It's, and some even aren't finalized at this moment in time. They're still waiting to confirm a couple of things. We'll get back to me next week kind of thing. So I hate to be the very bad news, but I would just kind of say, don't expect it for their B fans. And then that way, the odd ones that do have fans, great, you're one of the lucky venues. Um, but the biggest thing is working with the capacity issues at these venues and a lot of them are just enough to get the amount of teams in. So unfortunately, that would mean that no spectators would be allowed. But we are, as soon as that rule changes or a percent capacity changes, boom, like we can change it and it could be three days before the tournament. And now you can have spectators. So it will be a very fluid um process. And, and like I said, we'll always have the most up-to-date information on that venue on the upcoming tournament section of our OVA website.
We also.
Sorry, go ahead, Kate.
Um, we will also have tournament information pages for each of our pods as well. So this will be information where you can post to other teams or what we, information we can post and it'll just be like um how it was done before. So you have a big header, you select your provincial cup. And then under the provincial cup, you'll have, you know, your premier championship and then trilliums A, B, C, and D. So same thing, we'll have a provincial league play and then you'll have pod, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, whatever. Um, and then all that information will be up there. Tournament information pages. So all the spectator information, if we have it and things like that. So we'll be able to post that stuff for you guys as well.
Perfect. Alicia, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, kind of going back to the spectators and the one-pagers that Carrie's talking about for each facility as well. Um, basic, as Mark said, facility by facility, right? So the other thing we're looking at too, is trying to see if we can just, you know, have more than the fifteen to eighteen people on a roster, including coaching staff to allow for some um chaperones as well. So it's not just the co- coaching staff onsite. Um, so all that information would be made available during the uh, the tournament registration pages with information on how, if that team needs to arrive together based on that facility protocols, or if it's a person by person entry kind of there. Um, so yeah, there's going to be a lot of information on those tournament pages and sent out ahead of time. So we have a lot to review this year. Um, just to make it, you know, a safer turn to sports. So thank you for your patience, everyone. And we look forward to being back on the court playing properly soon.
Um, next question, um, since the league is basically a tournament, but over through three and a half weeks, uh, all athletes, all coaches, everybody who is participating, they do need to be fully registered in MRS. You are still a member. Um, so everybody needs to register um on your roster even before you are um registering in the event. Um, another question is, are athletes expected to score in line if parents aren't permitted? If we have no spectators and that is from four on four all the way up to eighteen U?
Yes, obviously venue, a capacity is going to be an issue for a little while, for the foreseeable future. Um, no, you are going to be able to switch that person in and out. Um, you may even be able to use if you're, you know, have multiple coaches or team staff there. But um, that's in a, um, unfortunately, one of the realities when we are often limited to, um, you know, hundred and fifty people on three courts or something like that. So, because we also have to include our officials in our numbers as well. Um, so it's a a reality, yes.
And that's where it might obviously be venue by venue too, where we might be able to get that more team staff uh in that number two. So like I said, it'll be, yeah, a lot of it will be venue by venue. But yeah, if it's very tight, it would be athletes doing.
Right. And like I said, um, another one popped out of the team manager could do it. Yes, absolutely. If we have enough capacity to welcome them into the facility. So um, we know we have a large amount of people permitted in MRS on a roster. Um, you may have to eliminate some of your team staff to make sure all your athletes come to, come to event depending on the capacity of each venue.
Also, um, in regards to spectators, have we looked into streaming on YouTube channels? Um, instead of having spectators, we're having an option for our parents to watch their kids play?
Absolutely. If you have a tripod and a data connection, um, Facebook Live, whatever, absolutely, you can live stream that. We're not going to hold anybody up from that at all.
Correct. Um, when is the earliest date for ECI up to fifteen, sixteen U able to start playing?
They can start to play uh as soon as your pods are announced. Um, absolutely. So if you're able to get that communication going, the scheduling going, play away.
Sorry. Um, can younger teams wait to register in the new year and not participate in league play altogether?
Yep. Yep, cer- certainly an option, uh, especially at the ECI age groups because the results of league player not used to promote and relegate. That does get a little bit trickier on fifteen U, sixteen U. Just picture it the same way as if you missed the provincial cup, what would happen? That's essentially the same thing that would happen in this, in this situation, if you're missing the fifteen U to sixteen U.
Um, if a club has multiple fifteen or sixteen U teams in the same age group, would they be in the same or a different league for their pod?
We would schedule it similar to what we do now in that, I think right now, we usually, Kate and I, we don't like to see more than two from the same club in an event. And we'll also, since most of it is based on geography for the fir- this first one, if it makes sense and you can get some different options in there, we can split them up. Um, but yeah, we, we would try our absolute best to not have more than two in a pod. But obviously, there's sometimes you will get some unique scenarios in more of the satellite locations where unfortunately, it is just a real, reality that, that will have to happen.
Um, okay. Has there been any advanced scouting done to make sure that each league pod will actually have access to at least one facility, which can accommodate more than one team? So I believe, uh, ba, 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 I believe that currently our club does not have any access to a facility that can accommodate more than one team.
Yeah. So we, I reached out to all the clubs uh over the last vote. We can have to kind of get like a final or like the most up-to-date piece of information as, as this continues to change. And we are aware of uh the few, well, I shouldn't say we're aware of every single one, but we are aware of um some clubs that are in that exact situation. And we will use that when we are creating our pods. Because for example, there's eight club, eight smaller clubs that currently have zero practice time, like nothing. So obviously, we've highlighted those and we will try our best to not put all eight in one single pod. Is that would not be the best situation. But yeah, we'll, we'll definitely be massaging that. And as, as we've kind of uh tried to express it now too, this is kind of a, a bringing all the other work together, try and make things work. So if a pod has nothing, just reach out to Caitlin and I, we'll reach out to some nearby pods and we'll try our best to make it work. And that's why part of the reason was for such a long time period of three and a half weeks, because yeah, you could play it one day. But we do realize that a lot of pods will be in tough situations. And yeah, it may require myself and Caitlin reaching out to eight other pods and be like, hey, we need some gym timers or anyone that knows anything about an hour or three hours that are available and we'll, and we'll try our best to work. We'll try our best.
It also ties back into where you have those two weekends with facilities available to run events and work with those pods that don't have enough facility space to run their own league matches. So you can almost look like a tournament format for that pod itself to get all of their league matches in for that day. So like Mark said, it's a lot of working together to try and make this happen.
Okay. And um, are playing rosters accepted on the honor system if score sheets are not delivered to the OVA?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, um, that honestly popped into our minds. Um, we know everybody wants to get back on the court and we're hoping that everybody's putting their right foot forward and, and doing, making the right decisions. Um, you will be made available score sheets. Um, so we ask that they are, score sheet is completed for your match. Um, however, the official will be the question whether or not you, you were hopefully able to get an official. So um, although there is no official, we do ask you to use a score sheet and you should be filling out your athlete roster on there. Um.
And don't forget, we do contact tracing as part of the return and play documents. So we have track of everyone who's at that facility for that event or.
Yeah. And the score sheet would be probably really important to that as well. So, um.
And we'll include that too in our, our welcome emails. We haven't worked out the exact logistics. Like for example, the team who wins the match, they have to submit results anyway. So maybe they just take a picture of the score sheet and submit it as well. So we will, we'll certainly clarify that. So everyone knows exactly what steps need to be taken.
Yeah, because I think of historic years of anterior championships and all the hosts bringing in their big boxes of score sheets anyway. So we usually don't come to the end of the year anyway. So it is kind of an honor system all year.
Um, and then we have some vaccination questions. So the first one is, will the OVA mandate vaccinations in the future?
Uh, the board of directors is following the government regulations. So we are following uh the regulations of public health. So if there's facilities that require uh vaccines for twelve plus. So if there's facilities that require uh, vaccines for twelve plus, we have to provide them to begin, um, to gain entry into that facility.
Correct, and also the second one is, do we know if the facilities that are booked for seventeen U, eighteen U, if they require full vaccination?
I'm just working through that information now and I would say the majority are requiring that. And since we don't know which team's going to be at which venue right now, I think it's just safe to message to your teams that you should almost expect it just because the majority are. And recently, I'm sure a lot of you've seen the York region public health update where they're requiring every single recreational facility to require double backs for twelve to eighteen U, and now we've seen that there's a total of twelve health regions. So that's twelve out of, I think thirty-seven that are doing that same thing. So there was a venue, for example, in York region that we had booked that didn't require it, but now they are required to. So it seems like that trend is kind of moving along the way through different health regions. So yeah, I would, I would expect, just expect to require it for the venues that we are covered just in case.
Um, and then I have one more question, unless anybody else has other questions for us. Um, what about Northern Ontario teams who don't have any other major clubs within an hour?
That's, the, that is, to be honest, that is a big red flag that we had when creating these league plays. That was our number one point of like, unfortunately, that is the biggest downside of league plays. And that would be an example of where Caitlin and I, when we're creating the pods, let's say there is a perfect example of it just, it doesn't make sense from a travel perspective to travel that far for one game. And that's where we would reach out, hey, maybe we can utilize this one venue to have your entire tournament in one day. So you're just making a trip down for one day instead of two or three games. So I hate to say it, but that is for sure downside for satellite teams, but we're, we're trying to work our way through it and try to limit as much as possible.
Perfect, um, and one more question just came through, um, for teams that are underage applying to play up. How will those underage teams be selected?
It's just complete random, so it's not first come, first served, it's, yeah, complete random. And then we'll message them directly and then they'll have, let's say, twenty-four hours to accept the spot or decline it. And if they accept, they must be registered in the MRS. So ultimately, they would have twenty-four hours to register in the MRS and make the full payment to be officially in.
Perfect, um, and the recording of this town hall will be up tomorrow, I believe, Alicia, correct me if I'm wrong. It'll be up tomorrow, so you can re-watch this or share it out to everybody else, all your coaches, um, if they didn't have time to talk to us today. And of course, now we've got some more questions coming in, so let me just wrap up with these questions here. Okay, what is the benefit of playing, of paying league fees besides the standings? So what does the money that they're paying get for league play?
It pays for your facility, so just like a normal tournament, you would be paying to register for that one day. And the facility is provided as that part of that fee, just like you have the points and promotion relegation after as well. So same thing here, we're paying for that ninety minute time slot for that facility. So if you had to practice anyways for that ninety minutes, we would be covering that ninety minute time slot.
It also covers the referee fee, the hosting package, the PPE, so hand sanitizer, just that's going out, the medals and the resources and the pool boards and all that fun stuff that are getting sent out. So it's still basically, think of it as a tournament, it's just spread out over three and a half weeks, so you're getting the same thing.
Yeah, the fees, and like we said, we've covered before, the fees are the exact same as what they would be for a regular season event.
Um, and can you just clarify, who's considered a satellite club?
Well, we just use the term satellite as in, uh, I don't know if it's like an official term on our website, but we just use that internally for the clubs that are further out and don't have that many clubs nearby. So realistically, the clubs that travel the most are usually the, the satellite, like your Windsor's, your Sudbury's, North Bay's, Ottawa, that type of scenario.
And we've also been looking at other facilities as well that we haven't historically used. So looking at that halfway point between like a North Bay, Sudbury, Barry type area. So um, you know, some of our clubs in the barrier area have reached out and said, hey, there's these brand new facilities. An hour north of Barry, that would be a great location, three courts, and they're actually permitting now, so let's look at that to try and get some of these pods running as well. Um, so you know, the UCU's comp staff are actually like, really busting their butts trying to get facilities for these matches to take place. Um, and the best possible way for the clubs, I know it's not ideal um, for the far north teams, you know, and far south and east that don't have a lot around them. But we're trying to make it work in the parameters that we have faced and you guys have, are facing as clubs as well. So we're just trying to make this happen and get volleyball playing.
Um, it's also important to note that these league play will give us a ba- a better baseline to start scheduling and ranking for January tournaments. Um, so the last actual ranking we have is not even in complete ranking, it was from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. So um, that's why we really want the, uh, we're not just thinking about canceling November, December because we know January is just going to be a really hard. Uh, it'll be hard to make sure we're achieving competitive balance with fewer events. So this way we can get a better idea of where everybody stands for January and then we can then go on and, and have a better idea of competitive balance. So and I don't know if Mark, I'm sure you did touched on it, but we will be using those twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty uh, results for creation of these pods as well, so um, yeah, we're doing the best we can with what information we have, so we will do our best to make sure that there is not, you know, um, premier rank number one in with uh, you know, a trillion green, so.
Time. We have a lot of questions coming in, right? Um, so question here, are seventeen U's automatically eligible for eighteen U?
They are eligible, but they would go on the waitlist, uh, if they're looking to play eighteen U. And I should mention, basically what we're just trying to say is you can play in one age group at this point in time. So if you're a seventeen U team, you're an unreal seventeen U team and you just want to make, you just want to play eighteen U the whole year? Well, then just send me an email, we, we can certainly make that happen, but at this point, we just, we just aren't able to accommodate teams playing in multiple age groups at that tournament format, so just a seventeen U and eighteen U.
Um, can you give us an idea of which facilities are being used for seventeen, eighteen U?
We will be.
What regions are they in?
A lot of GTA, um, just because they had, it's the, the most amount of private venues we could find. Um, one or two in Ashwa, St. Catherine's. Guelph, Woodbridge. It is definitely heavier GTA uh, location. And we'll also be, after this meeting, we'll be posting a lot more of the stuff on our website, we're kind of holding off on some of it, like the new calendar. We'll be posting the, basically all the information we have, we'll start posting it, so you guys can start seeing it as we release the information.
And when we say we're scheduling based off of geography, does that mean, oop, it just jumped, does that mean that it's, you can get anywhere within an hour? Or what do we mean by geography?
Unfortunately, there's not a solid answer to that just because of the landscape of Windsor being so far from Ottawa and, and North Bay. So where possible, we will put the closest teams together and unfortunately, we can't say minimum an hour. It ultimately depends on, let's say we get a hundred teams in list, we have the entire map of Ontario and it's just creating the pods based on that map as efficiently as possible. And, and unfortunately, some teams will be kind of further away from the rest of the teams in their pod and that's unfortunately just the reality of the size of the province.
And if there's a brand new team that's coming in without any ranking at all, how um, will they find the appropriate ranking for their league or the pod?
So this will only be a potential issue for fifteen, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen U girls because all the boys' age groups and all of ECI, they are all starting at one level. Um, so it's very simple there, really, it does not matter what your rank is going in, because everyone has the same shot. Fifteen U to eighteen U girls, that's where we'll have two different tiers to start. And we do have an initial placement uh, policy that you can apply for and it'll be in the manual that we're posting shortly on how you can do that. But essentially, if you do have a strong team that might have come over from another club or something, we'll take an average of the top six or seven players. And then if that average is in the top half of that top tier, then we will shift you over. So there's definitely an option for those few teams in that scenario that we can, we can look at. Just send Caitlin an email if it's fifteen U or under and then myself an email if it's sixteen U to eighteen U and we'll help you work through that.
Um, can teams make their own league, get together with their friends?
Most certainly, if you, if you have gym space and you have teams, I know the last year and a half, a lot of clubs have been playing with each other, playing um, with different teams in the clubs, it's not, I think, early in the pandemic, there was this washout period that we had to worry about, which isn't the case at the, at the moment now, so you can certainly have your own league on the side and OVA league, it's, it's completely up to you and your team and your club.
But what if they want to do it instead of?
Oh, you certainly can, it's just there, there'll be no results that count from that other league that we'll use for scheduling January events.
Yeah, so it won't count towards one of your events, um, to qualify for Ontario championships for the older age groups and just not four on four. Um, and it also won't, your results won't uh, count towards your ranking for the January season as well. Um, okay, so I think I might have gotten all the questions, um, if I didn't get your question, I apologize. The chat has been going off very quickly, um, so if you do have another question for us, um, you can email any of us four, we'll able to answer you at any moment, um. Is league play for traditional and specialized like the first event that they were supposed to get?
Yes, yeah. Essentially for traditional, not, sorry, just breaking that a little bit further, traditional non-specialized, because the second event was going to be a, like, points and everything. But this is just as the first event, so it's going to be a developmental event.
Okay, um, this question says back to back matches equals a hundred and eighty dollars, two matches at once equals ninety dollars.
So back to back matches, that means you're playing two different teams for your league match, you're, you're permitted ninety minutes for each of those. So we would, um, it's not ninety dollars, it's ninety minutes. So um, whatever you pay for ninety minutes for your permit is what we cover. Um, and so you would be given a hundred and eighty minutes towards your permit. Um, if you were playing more than one team during your gym time.
And there is no cap on that, but if you, we see you booking like Scotiabank place or something for your match, we may uh, question that, but yeah, there's no cap.
If we scrimmage a game prior to November twelfth or eighteen, um, and it turns out to be against one of the pod teams, can it count towards their results?
No, it has to be during our league time, um, sport, it counts.
And last question, OVA championships, when will the dates be released?
Dates are released, they're already out there, we don't have the age split, so we need clubs to register their teams in MRS, because right now, um, a lot of them aren't. So for us to actually make a proper split of those age groups, we need to have the teams registered in the system to make sure we fit at the different locations. So clubs, please, get in there, get your teams created, so we can actually announce where you're playing and when.
Perfect, so I think that is it, I'm gonna call it. Um, and yeah, so thank you everybody for joining us today, we hope that you guys are just as excited about um, getting back to the court and doing league play, league play pivoting this year. Um, and we're really excited, so we hope you guys are too, so thanks again for um, spending time with us today. If you have any questions, let us know.